Okay. Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, can I do the whole box? Yes. Um, sorry. Yes, let that little column please.
Bush.
Here.
Chambers.
Here.
Dahl.
Here.
Dunn. Lindsay.
Here.
Stathis.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll do the local office.
And if the three of you want to just stand and read that together using your own names.
Do it together.
Yeah, you can do it together.
Okay, I, I, Mr. Bush. Have been elected on April 2nd, 2019 as a member of the school board of the Northland Unified School District, but having not yet entered upon the duties thereof, hereby certify that I am a citizen of said school district and swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully discharge your duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And if each sign up please and then I'll sign. Today is the 22nd.
Thank you guys. Um, we're gonna move right into the final actions with Lisa.
Who are yours?
Is this seat taken?
It's yours!
Okay. Hi guys. We're back. I think I, um, we went kind of through a version of this last time, right after. No, Erin, you can hear.
Oh, you're okay.
Okay. Well, we can share. We can share. Okay. I don't wanna, I feel bad, I took a seat. Okay. So we've had, we've been through like, I think last November, right after the referendum passed, I came, and we kinda went through a version of this. We talked about financing plan, but then, we know what happens after that. So, this is an update, but I'm sure you probably don't remember a lot about what I talked about. So, what I wanna do is I want to, um, uh, talk about interest rates, where we're at right now, and things have shifted a little bit since I was here last, talking about this topic, so I'll explain what I'm thinking in terms of financing, how I think we should move forward with financing, a couple of financing options, um, and then what the timeline might look like. So, those are the three topics that I wanna review, and I have a hard copy, I don't know if you guys want the hard copy?
Sure.
Okay. So, the, it's interest rate update. So the good news is, interest rates, this is my 30-year snapshot of a 20-year bond, so, this is a weekly index that comes out. It's, when I started at Baird's, we were at, actually, this goes back to when I started at Baird's, um, we were at that 78% range. Um, interest rates, basically, that gray box there is just a one-year snap, snapshot. They've done nothing but come down since November, so that's good for you guys. We've come down as almost a half a percent or more, um, since November. So, the, where we are today is where the line is, and that's not where you're gonna sell your bonds, but the index is at 250, but we're, um, it's just, interest rates have just, we're in a really good market right now, even today. The report today on the way out here, um, I was listening to what, you know, where rates are, and there's so much demand for municipal borrowing, and that's pulling interest rates down. So, I mean, that's good. We, we were very conservative when we went out at referendum time, I think we were in that 4%, 25% range, we're unlocking in 3.5, you know, or lower. So, um, so it's, so it's, it's good. It's good for you guys. So I'll, and I'll show you how, what that looks like, um, as we go through and look at the financing thing. So, I just wanted to hit some highlights again. I think Mitch and Marsha and I were on the phone for an hour or more and talking about a lot of the details, so what I wanna do for you guys is just, what do you need to know as four numbers, and what are the highlights? Number one goal is to hit the referendum target and not go by $178 last November that we went to referendum for. And keeping in mind that we still have that levy this fall for the $350,000, you know, we wanna make sure that we've got that in back of our mind, so, you know, I've got that 98 cent impact or 74 cent average. Um, so all of those factors in terms of what we went out to referendum for is going to be absolutely number one when we put this financing plan together, and you'll be happy to know that we're gonna easily hit that. Again, because we're conservative, we'll use interest rates when we're in referendum. Another goal would be to minimize your total interest cost on the borrowing, so keeping that interest rate as low as possible, and we do that through bond rating, we do that through timing in the market, getting, you know, hitting the market on a good day. I also wanna minimize your interest rate risk, and that's where we talked about last fall, the possibility of doing two borrowings, there's risk there because we don't know that, where are interest rates gonna be on that second borrowing. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. And, investment earnings. If I was sitting here five years ago, we wouldn't even be talking about investment earnings because you borrow the money and put it in the bank and earn what, .2, .3, you aren't earning anything. That's changed significantly. Um, you can borrow money now and put it in the bank and earn 2, 2.5, 3%. So that's about for $11 million, $11,920, that is about $24,000 a month that you could earn once we borrow the money. So I have districts right now that are on very fast track because they need every dollar investment earnings to use for projects. All the earnings that you receive on a bond, so when you borrow the money, you put it in the bank and you earn $24,000 on one scenario, I said versus $17,000 on another scenario if you split the borrowings, but all that earnings can be used for projects. So I, I just really wanna emphasize how important it is to remember that those earnings can go towards projects. So if you have overages, if you have, you don't, you know, you have upgrades or whatever it is for your projects, you can, you could, you know that you have investment earnings.
Or can we give it back to the taxpayer?
Or, you can use those earnings to downsize, um, build tax levy, so one year you wanna bring the tax levy down, you can use the earnings for that, or you could, you could prepay the debt at some point. So, two years down the road, and I did this in Ellsworth, where two years down the road, he called me, he had like, I don't even know how much left over, um, it was like $800,000, it was a significant amount, and we just used it to prepay the debt. So you have options, you're right. Don't have to use it for projects, but cannot use it to buy books or pay teachers, you have to use it for the debt if you're not gonna use it for the project. And that's something you can decide later, at the end. You can call me and say, two years down the road, say, "We're done, and we have a balance in our account of X," and then we'll talk about what your options are. Okay? So those are some of the goals. On the right-hand side, some of the assumptions that we're looking at, again, 20 years, um, it's gonna be a 20-year loan, statutorily, you can't go any longer than that. Um, I want to, uh, leave some flexibility for this fall tax levy, again, because it's year one, we've got that recurring referendum in there, um, we don't know what the governor's doing right now with the budget, we don't have a budget right now, um, so there's a lot of unknowns in your tax levy. Not just the debt, I mean, I'm talking your operations. So we wanna have as much flexibility as possible, and I've really built that in, you'll see that. Um, and again, the impact's less than $178, and I'm trying to keep your payments level, same payment every year. From a budgeting standpoint, Marsha will be very happy. Um, and it just makes sense, you don't want an increasing payment structure on your bonds, you don't, you probably wouldn't want a declining payment structure, you wanna just keep them the same every year. And so that's what I've really focused on, the payments being the same every year. Um, skipping down to the credit rating, that's a big deal because whatever your credit rating is on the bonds, I mean, that drives the interest rate. Investors who want, you know, investors who see a double A as a credit rating will give you a lower interest rate. If your credit rate's lower, you pay a little bit higher. The difference between these, let's just say 10 basis points, so .1%, maybe sometimes .15. So if you borrow at four, with a better credit rating, your interest rate might be a 3.85%. And that's hundreds of thousands of dollars on interest costs. When I talk about minimizing interest costs or bringing the cost of, of this whole borrowing down, I'm talking about bond rating. And we are gonna work really hard, um, to not only pick a rating agency, we haven't even done that yet, I circled Moody's double A3 because that's where you land on my preliminary analysis for Moody's, but Standard and Poor's, um, is another rating agency, and investors don't care which rating agency you pick. But I know what they're gonna ask, I know the questions that they're gonna ask because I'm on these calls all the time, and I actually quizzed you a little bit when we talked earlier. Um, I still haven't decided yet, I'm still, it's, I'm not sure, um, but the goal is gonna be to stay in that, at that double A3 level, and if you go with Standard and Poor's, it would be a double A minus, that's, that was what they would rate you. Um, if you get an A1 or an A+ and you might, you know, it's just that 10, 15 basis point differential. So, we're gonna do our best to get the highest bond rating. Okay, so that's a little bit about the bond rating, again, we're, that's what's really gonna take the time, um, just to get that in place. So, the steps that we can take to, um, do the financing, and we talked a little bit about this last time as well, is we, we could do what's called a BAN, a bond anticipation loan, bridge loan. You build a house, a lot of times you, you borrow a bridge, you do a bridge loan to get the money to start building a house, and then you lock in your long-term bonds, in this case, um, later. The advantages of doing up an approach like this with a BAN and a parameters resolution is that you get the money quickly, so we can start investing, um, investing that money in a bond anticipation, it's a quick process. Um, and it also allows us, so you, we could adopt a BAN as early as your May 13th board meeting, um, we begin to invest right away, soon as we close. Um, it allows us to, so you would adopt BAN, the note, and a parameters resolution, so the parameters resolution goes with the BAN, kind of, they're two, they're two separate resolutions, but what the parameters resolution does is it lays out all of the parameters of the bonds. So payment date, maximum interest rate, and I've been doing this a lot because what that helps us to do is once that resolution's adopted, and we have the bond rating placed, you guys can lock in any day. We don't have to wait for a board meeting date to lock in interest rates. And it's really helped us with the volatility of the market, with the changes in the market going up, you know, day by day. Um, so what happens is we would, um, get everything ready to lock in the bonds, and then we would just watch the market. Mondays typically aren't good days because there's a lot of bonds in the market, Tuesdays are better, there's less bonds. Wednesday, maybe there's some kind of economic factor that's coming out on a Wednesday, so maybe we don't wanna lock in. So we can watch and pick, then, once we have that parameter resolution, can lock in any day. So that's a, a really nice feature of that. We can also make sure that the local banks are involved because, and we'll talk about this again, because in this scenario, Baird would be hired would be the underwriter, we'll talk about underwriter financial advisor, but being an underwriter, that's, allows us to find buyers, to sell bonds to insurance companies and local banks and other banks and mutual funds and money markets and those kinds of investors. Because when you borrow money through municipal bonds, there's not one lender, it's not one, we're not lending the money to you, we're, it's a ser, it's a, it's a pool of lenders that we're, that we work with that buy municipal bonds, and that's what keeps the interest rate down. Um, the two scenarios, I know there's a lot of numbers, you guys, there's a lot of numbers, so, I wanna just, I'm just gonna hit the high level. The, the bottom green box is your tax income, so, look at that. That's what we're looking at as an estimated impact if we go with, in this scenario, we call it non-bank qualified, it's borrowing it all at once. This is new because last year we only talked about a two-phase borrowing. The way the market is right now, this is gonna mitigate risk if we borrow it all now. Interest rates are so low, I think at a 3.5% right here, um, but we mitigate the risk because we're locking that payment in now. We know interest rates are low, we know we're in a good bond rate, bond environment, a lot of the districts that I'm working with right now are taking this kind of scenario because it's for sure. We know, we, we lock in and we fix everything right away, and we know we're gonna get underneath what we went to referendum for, which is that dollar, what was it again, dollar EBIT?
78.
Dollar 78. So we're at $1.66 with this scenario. So again, this scenario is doing it all at once, now it's non-bank qualified. It's, banks cannot bid on this, they wouldn't wanna bid on this because of the way that's, that's due to the taxes on this one full borrowing. Um, and non-bank qualified just means you borrow more than $10 million in a calendar year, which you would, and it does carry higher interest rates. Okay, so I, I wanna be clear that if we split the borrowing and we keep it bank qualified, so $10 million or less in a calendar year, in other words, we, we do the second borrowing later, you, you would likely carry lower interest rates because it's bank qualified. However, the risk being, we don't know what that second borrowing, your interest rates are gonna be on that second borrowing.
I have a question for you. Why answer around $10,000, that's allowed under law, get lower interest rate and gamble on the 1.9?
Yeah, that's what the second scenario is.
Oh, is that?
Mm-hmm. So the next scenario...
Oh, next page.
Okay, so, I don't have the brochure, but I, um, I decided that'd be kind of wise that you do, I think.
This is one, I have that's wrong.
Okay.
Um, so, this, um, so let's go back, I'll, I'm gonna talk about that scenario, the bank qualified, that scenario was just that, let's go back to the previous one. So again, focusing in on the impact being a $1.66. The bottom right-hand box, with that showing referendum debt service, what I'm trying to show there is what we had for total cost when we were planning versus where we are right now and the difference. So, when we see the final financing plan, that box will change, but right, where we are right now, the different, you're, we're about $1,290 under what we went out to referendum for. It's not really savings, but it's less in interest cost because interest rates are lower. Okay, so, there's about $1,290 that we're under, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We're under what we went to referendum for by $1,290 right now.
So your previous numbers were based on four and a quarter, maybe?
Yeah, and now this is three. So that's a big, big piece. So again, $1.66, we're $1,290 under. The third one I'm gonna show you is on the 1920 year, I kinda put line on the top and the line on the bottom, all the way across the page, that's this fall's levy. So we're maximizing the flexibility for this fall, for the levy, I'm getting it as low as possible. So, in this scenario, your levy would be just to the right of the box, so $588,000 is your tax levy. You can always levy more.
And the impact is a $1.61, I take it there.
Yeah. That's the total, yeah. But, you can always levy more, I, and that's what I, when I talk about flexibility, the minimum amount you'll have to levy is the 588. But, when all your numbers come in in October, and you, if you can levy more, just like last fall, we levied that 400,000, you can do that. Okay? But the minimum amount is the 588. Okay, so I just wanna point that out because when you look at the next scenario, and we can probably flip over to that one now, the next scenario is keeping everything bank qualified, so this is giving, this is borrowing, doing two separate borrowings, still a BAN bond on the 8.4 million, and the reason why it's, or 8.5, the reason why, because you guys do cash flow borrowing. So we're normally borrowing 8.5 million.
We have a, we have farmer savings for up to 1.5 million.
Yeah. So we kept it at 8.5. We could do the full 10, and then we just do farmer bank on a taxable basis, but, which is probably what we would do if you guys wanna do the split borrowing.
That would be smarter, you'd get better interest rate, wouldn't it?
Yes, but the risk is that second borrowing.
But it's such a small amount, when you have a total amount of the loan, based on what you're gonna earn.
Yep.
I, doesn't make any sense?
But it's, she's only nice. And 300 something percent difference.
Well, that, don't look at that, don't look at that, because it's, it's really better rates because it's the long, I'm lacking, I'm getting technical, I'm lacking in the long end of the yield curve, so the principal payback is three years like '09 through '20 at a 3.40 setup, and if it's weighted heavy at the end, if you have equal payments, it would probably be a 3.30, you know, something lower.
Okay.
But again, I, okay, so, um, bottom right-hand box to your point is that you're saving more, I mean, you're not saving more. You're paying less, you're paying even, even less than the previous scenario. So, someone who didn't understand the risk would say, "Oh my gosh, this is a better scenario because it's less interest because it's being qualified." But I, I'm, but guess what? I put, I built in a full percentage point higher on that second borrowing.
Uh-huh.
So I, I'm totally, I, you could definitely do it this way, I mean...
There'd be no cushion on that, that'd be weird to do.
Because I did build in a significant amount of cushion on that second borrowing. But if interest rates go up beyond 3.75, then we should've done the first scenario.
And the difference when she's, you mentioned like $24,000 versus $17,000, this would be the 17 because you actually have less that you're getting the interest out, so that, that would be the difference.
Yeah. Now, if we shift it, and I don't have that as another scenario, but we could, and do the full 10 million as first borrowing, then you have to do your cash, you haven't done the cash flow borrowing yet this year, have you?
Marsh?
No.
Nope.
So you just have to do it on a taxable basis, which is not a big deal. It's not, but you, it's a little higher interest rate, but for cash flow borrowing, it's so short, so, yeah, so we could increase the 17,000 with a $10 million borrowing, sorry, it's confusing, I hope you guys are following me.
Sure.
Yeah, so, um, and, the flexibility of this one is that that levy now goes down 409, so it's a lower levy that you're required to, again, just bracing ourselves for what's gonna happen this fall, you don't want your millweight to skyrocket on the operations side, and then we can't do anything about the debt.
And that's greatly appreciated by the superintendent of the school district.
I got your back, I got your back. But I, it's just really, really important, I just wanna, but I wanna get the money borrowed now, I wanna lock, and if we can lock in the 10 million, I feel better about where interest rates are right now, that we're, at least we're getting lower rates for the 10 million. Rates skyrocket for the 1 million of 1.9.
But if you look at the savings of the 24 versus the 17 versus the 1.29 million versus the 1.6...
That's a, that's a...
You're really, only 13,000 difference total in both of these.
So you're saying $7,000 now?
You have 97,000 bigger difference in this second scenario, but you're losing 7,000 times 12, so that's 84,000.
Yeah.
And that's if you're only investing for 12 months.
Which probably will be, that's a good estimate because you probably will be investing it longer, but you'll be drawing from it too, so that's, I would've been, I would've said 7,000 per year.
So I actually, I agree with Doc, but I also, I also like the idea of locking something and knowing personally.
Yeah, like not taking any risk and saying, "We're gonna lock in as soon as possible, we're gonna..."
Especially if you could lock it in at 3% instead of 3.5.
Yeah, I'm not gonna even tell you what I got last week. This is conservative, it's gonna be, I hope it'll be less than 8.5%.
So, but you got 2.5 last week.
No. My lowest was 2.42 for Slinger in 2016, we're not gonna get 2.42.
But, but let's say if the building project comes in at 11 million.
Yeah.
We have some interest that has been earned, and we have 900,000, that could be used as a principal payment. So if we borrow all, you know, because the one, on the one hand, if you borrow in two pieces, and you, it's coming in, in great condition, we don't have to borrow the whole amount in the second loan, but if we borrow it all upfront, a principal payment can be made, which could...
There's no prepayment penalty on some bonds, there are prepayments.
No, there's no prepayment penalty, but you would have to put it into an escrow because we don't have, we won't have a call date, we won't have a prepayment date till eight years out, so it just sticks, we just put it in an escrow, and it's called a defeasance, it's a little bit more technical, but, I mean, you can definitely, districts do that.
This has been the interest on that escrow?
You guys.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you put it in an escrow, and we buy you those treasury securities and you get the interest, so we can definitely do that.
I love your car.
Um, so yeah, so I mean, we really need to get some direction about whether we think we should do it all now, all now, or, um, if we, and the more I think about it, the more we would do 10 million. We either do 10 million now or all of it now. Um, I know we have the 8.5 here, but we can do the cash flow borrowing, taxable, that's gonna be the way to go. Um, we also could, so, when you think about risk and how long we have to wait, we're April right now, we could lock in as soon as November on that second borrowing and close in January, like, oh wait, is it a 10-year? Oh, we might have to go. We might have, no, we might not be able to do that if it's a 10-year. Can't do that, because if we close in January, then we would have to have, it would have to be a nine-year loan, which we could do, I'll figure that out, but, that's just technical, I'm just saying we could, the risk is not a full year out, the risk is really...
Seven months.
Yeah, seven or eight months for that two-phase borrowing. The other benefit of the two-phase borrowing is that, you know, we don't have to borrow, if you, it's not to exceed a amount of 11.9, but I mean, if it comes in less, that second borrowing could be something lower, you know, that one or two.
What's your thoughts, Andy?
Wish we knew what the market was gonna do.
I know. Um, you know, I, you know, Burlington, I left 5 million out there, um, and Wisconsin Delta, I left some of theirs too, for that second borrowing. All the other ones have been wanting to get it done right away. If we, the whole point of these other, and I'm just comparing to other districts, is that if you hit the referendum impact, then you'll know, that was kind of their thoughts, but, they also, some of them were really concerned about needing the earnings for projects. You guys, probably really hard to say right now.
I've translated contingencies in their design of 11.92, whether HSR will have that same level of contingency in that plan or not, remains to be seen, but...
Well, it's, it sounds like, you seem to be excited about this being a uniquely low interest rate given predictions and volatility of the market.
Yeah.
Otherwise you wouldn't be proposing this non-bank qualified scenario. And it sounds like, based on your estimates, you know, conservative on both scenarios, it, it sounds like it's gonna be a overall lesser impact to the taxpayer if we go that route, even though, um, to Ev's point, borrowing less than 10, 10 million is, is a lower risk or a, gives us a lower interest rate initially did. Um, and it, it looks like it's 3.47 compared to 3.5.
Yeah, so, the, we were just talking about that, the, it's probably, when you think about the weight...
Oh, you said don't look at that.
Yeah, because the weight is on years, like, that scenario right there is showing principal amortization from 29 to 39, like, the last 10 years.
Yeah.
Um, and that's what gives you the 3.47. If we would smooth that out, like the first scenario where it's equal payments all the way down, that 3.47 would be 3.30 or 3.20, you know, would be lower.
Oh, I see.
Because you'd have more, because the long end of the yield curve has the higher interest rates, the years 10 or 20, rates go higher.
Okay.
So it's not one flat rate, it's gonna be rates, oh, later.
Okay, so you would be able to arrange that so that the gap between initial borrowings would be larger than 3.47 to 3.5?
You, I mean, try not to focus too much on the 3.47 as much as it will be lower, bank qualified rates are lower, and you'd have two borrowings together that would have one, you know, if you wanted to compare it to the 3.50, those combined deals probably will end up, you know, would end up technically lower than 3.50, probably 3.30.
Okay.
It's just how we're amortizing the debt.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm trying not to fixate on it, but at the same point, at the same time, I think that's, that's Everett's point of going with the bank qualified loan, is that we give it a better interest rate, so that's why I'm trying to ask, well, how much better?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be 25 basis points probably lower.
Okay.
But because I'm splitting the borrowing... But because I'm splitting the borrowings, I have to increase the rate on the second borrowing because I don't know, rates are gonna be.
Of course. Yeah, I got that.
So, if I, if it was a snapshot from today, that second borrowing would probably be, you know, 3% or, you know, be lower because it's only 10 years. But I had to, actually, it was 2.75 because I had a full percentage point on there. Yeah. So, the blended rate together, those two deals are much lower than the 3.50 if you, if they're all issued right today, but I had to add more on that second borrowing.
Here's a question I've got for you. If you do the bank qualified and you borrowed the 10, that's the legal allowable amount for bank qualified. That would be invested in average return. What would that subtracted from the total 11.9 for the project? In other words, if the borrowing allowable is 11.9 for borrow 10, you're gonna earn some amount, a guesstimate on what that would be?
Well, it's gonna be in between, it's, it's gonna be in between, it's gonna be, let's just say 20 grand a month.
Okay, so let's say it's over the length of the loan.
For two years.
For, okay, well, then we'll call it 400,000 roughly. So, what I'm saying is then that 11.9, you've already cut that by 400,000.
Yeah.
So, to me, it's worth it to go for the lower rate.
Yeah, you, yeah, you're saying that if you earn over the next year, the 400,000.
For two years, so we're 27,000 a month, 20,000 a month for two years.
You won't have, you won't have that total amount in there for two years because we'll be making payments.
Oh, I see, I got you. But in a sense, it reduces the total borrow.
Yes, it could.
Could, if you, if you chose to do that.
Yeah, yeah, it really gives you flexibility on that second borrowing as far as what you want, how much you wanna put there, so.
I guess, I mean, you can't look in a crystal ball and tell us, but do you think between April and November, given the economy what it is now, is there gonna be a big change in interest rates? You think Steve, you think Steve Moore will make it to the Fed? I hope not. Oh, oh, good lord.
I can't, I can't, I've seen interest rates when Trump got elected, they went up in six weeks, a full percentage point, in six weeks.
Yeah, but then they also went down almost as quickly.
Yeah, they went down.
You know, if you look back at the time.
Over a period of a couple of months, they went down. Um, I've seen other times in 2013 where it was a full percentage point within eight weeks. But, I mean, I've been doing this for 30 years, and have I seen that twice or three times in 30 years maybe? You know what I mean? So, what I'm saying is.
I'm just looking at your previous graph, the original, the slide going down. So, we're, you know, to me, you'd be able to take the risk because in seven months, I don't see that slide going in that direction that quickly.
Yeah, well, it could. I've seen it, but not very often.
I know you have to be cautious and awareness, but.
Do you have a trend in interest rates over years?
Well, that's what that first slide.
That first slide, yeah.
So, in 2013, you can see a huge increase in a very short period of time. It's hard to tell.
In 1980, I had a house note that every month it changed the interest rates. I raised a high of 19.5. I, I do remember days of high interest, and so, I'm sure somebody else here in the room understood, but the trend line here, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I came in, I was gung ho on that, on that one borrowing. We talked about it, and now, and while we talk it through and, you know, giving your viewpoint, I, I, you know, we can do either way.
How does that then affect the cash flow borrowing?
So, again, with the first scenario, if you borrow all at once, it's not, it's not a big deal.
Right, I'm saying if we went option two and.
You'd have to do a tax.
Borrow 10 million, so then there's expense to that.
Yeah, but it's gonna be a couple thousand, it's gonna be.
Okay.
The difference between, I mean, is it a one-year trend? Is that what it is, the cash flow borrowing?
Yep.
So, I mean, it's, it's not gonna be very much compared to a $10 million.
Right.
You know, 20-year bond, it's, it's kind of, I always do my trend taxable. In fact, we had done this, when we did this last fall, I think it was, you had already done your cash flow borrowing. Yeah, so, yeah, there's definitely, we can definitely increase that to 10 million, and that's not a big deal.
Because it's usually the end of the summer.
Yeah.
So, whatever the board decides, Lisa, when, I guess my question is, when will we start making payments to either our construction contractor or HSR? What do you envision it to be?
HSR is working up a, a draw proposal and has been in contact with Lisa. I don't know if they'll come, they're coming back down again Thursday, so I don't know if they'll have something that they'll share with us at that point in time, kind of look at, you know, here's what we're thinking, and we're gonna get started, and here's, here's our proposal for, for growing payments. But, you know, now they are, are architect and they know what project they're doing,
so. And, and through, through design, by the time the board gets a, a couple of months to decide what we're doing, doesn't it sound like any construction is gonna take place this summer?
I would say no. I would, I would say they'll, the, the, the thing we're pushing is for them to explore the foundation and really get into the building, get to the places.
So, there could be some expense.
There could, yeah, there could be some expense to any contractor, you know, something, a structural engineer of some sort, there'll be some expense to that, and then their design.
So, Lisa, whatever the board decides.
If I was here last month, it's not so much.
Whatever, whatever plan, you'll go out, it may could be, it could be a month before you lock in the interest rates for us if, if you see sideways movement, too bound.
We're gonna do the, I wanna do the ban right away so we can get that invested and start earning on if it's 10 million or 12 million. We're, right now, I have a ban being approved at your May 13 board meeting, closing on June 3rd. So, June 3rd is when you'd have money in your construction account, you could start paying invoices and earn the, start earning.
All right.
And then after that, um, we can lock in in June, we'll lock in in June the fixed rate bonds.
Okay, so, we, we go out and we secured a $10 million bond at your standards. And that's in our account, so we're paying, we start paying interest on that the day you lock that in for us.
Yeah.
On the entire 10 millions, even though we're not spending it. However, like Doc was saying, we're getting rewarded whatever investment interest return.
Yeah, and you, you levied that 400 last year, which is perfect because that's gonna play really nicely into the payments for that. And, yeah, we were like incorporating that extra 400 that you levy. Yeah, and then the bonds, the refunding bonds, what's it called, refunding bonds? They'll pay off the note. That's what they're issued for, they're issued to pay off the note. When we have bond rating plans, everything's ready to go, and we have a good bond market, we'd lock in on whatever day that is. And when that closes, it pays off the notes.
So, your parameter would, would tell Baird, this is what we're looking at, and as soon as they see that, they can go ahead and sell the bonds, lock in that rate, and they don't have to come back and say, here's what we see today, are you ready to? So, it gives them the flexibility to give us the best deal possible.
Yeah. So, what do you guys think?
With.
Keep going.
With a planning estimate on either one of these and the current estimate coming in at 1.3, and you add there a 900,000 contingency to that, that's almost 2 million, over 2 million. So, in essence, if we go for 10 million, we may not have to borrow the 1.9.
This, this is not money in our pocket. This 1.3 is not money in our pocket. It means, it would almost be like your interest rate on your house comes down, so you're, you're not paying as much interest over that 20 years.
This is an interest savings.
That's exactly what it is. We were conservative, and it's not even savings, because we were conservative. We were in a rising interest rate environment last fall, and all my financing plans were conservative at the interest rate, using that four, four and a quarter, four and a half, whatever I used, I mean, and that's what the cost was. Well, now, we're in a great interest rate environment, so now the payments are a lot lower and to the 200 million rate.
Larry, this is, this is scenario now compared to scenarios then.
I get you.
If we're in a better spot to borrow now, it's really.
The final, the final 1.0 time really won't have to be borrowed for upwards of two years.
You, you, exactly, yeah.
So, we, we have a long time to lock.
Yes, yes. I mean, we wanna lock it in when we need it. I mean, we're looking at the draw schedule, and if they say, you know, whenever you need it next July, we can lock it in next July. If we're in a bad interest rate environment this fall or next spring, we can wait it out. It's not gonna, you guys shorten the yield curve, doesn't move as much either, so this is gonna be amortized the first seven years. That's what the pain, this one is 10, but it's gonna be smaller, it's around 10 million, 1.9. So, like, when you look at, like, people who buy bonds that are, you know, invest in bonds, like, in years one, two, three, and four, like, like they're getting paid back sooner, those rates don't move. It's the long end, it's the, when they invest into years 20, 19, 18, those are more volatile. That's the more risky. So, you were already mitigating risk by locking in years 10 through 20 on that first one, the first 10 million. Does that make sense?
Point going back to making payments in, in your past history with your schools you've worked with, when, when you get into heavy construction, is the construction completed and every payments are made once a month or under a certain contract, when, when the contract, the contract is signed, payments made, or the work is done, then the payments made, it's bumped aside?
They give us a draw schedule. HSR gives us a draw schedule, and every month they'll ask for X dollars. I don't know, like, how the invoicing works or anything like that, but the draw schedule will say, we need this, and then when you get to the summer months, that's when they get really high, like, they really take bigger draws, and then smaller over the winter months, and then next summer, they'll be bigger draws until it totals to 11.9.
And when you did, sorry, when you did this project, Marcia was the one that basically handled all that. The invoices came to Marcia, and Marcia would take care of, of that payment schedule, so to speak.
Don't you have someone oversee it? I mean, you don't just have the invoice, I think, isn't there a sign off where you go, oh, yeah, you did do this?
Yes, yes.
Some people call him a project manager, I don't know what, but.
Well, it would be a confirmation of HSR, and if we hire a construction manager.
Right, exactly.
Unless we wanted to do a third set of eyes, Doc, which would be an attractive one.
Or if we wanna use Roger and Marsha to double check everything, or if we wanna, you know, use an advisory committee or something.
You, you had, they had a construction manager here, and it actually drove the cost of this project up, having that construction manager on, on this project. So, I think between your architect and your general contractor.
There are also state inspections that are mandatory in some of the work, I, I believe, isn't there? If I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
There is a, is another check you might see.
That was a third-party construction manager. It was. Not the same as. Correct. The field. Yeah, I think that's, I wanna say on the plaque, I think the first name's Joaquin or something of that nature, Hans or.
Hans.
Hans, there we go, that's what it is. Yeah, he was a third-party project manager, so to speak, that if you talk to Roger, you would say certainly helped drive the cost of the project up. So, is there anything you would like Lisa to have for us, for May, if you're, if you're really thinking?
2.0 interest. But, no, I think you should probably set up both scenarios for the May, because that would be the decision-making time, right?
So, you wanna look at the 10 million and, and all of it, 11.9?
Yeah, all in, all done, or the 10.
So, and I totally respect that, and we'll just, the whole, we'll move the timeline then, because we were hoping that we could, we could lock in the note on May 13 at the board meeting and the parameters for the resolutions. And I find.
So, you need to know which one or leave which.
Yes, I was kind of hoping that we.
Make a decision.
Yeah, but I mean, if you guys need time, just encourage, and I mean, I don't wanna push you either, I just.
I don't think I'm gonna change my mind. I would go for 10, I'll have a balance later. That's just my opinion.
We're not gonna, it's not true action, but you can give direction to Lisa to say.
Okay, we'll do a straw boat. We'll assume that you just made a motion.
Lisa, why this is lower than that is because the bonds get issued at premium.
Okay.
It's getting technical. And the premium is money that you can close in, and you use that to help pay off the debt. You have, I don't know exactly what that is. It's great.
So, we'd use, you know, I mean, we're not. We're gonna take a straw boat.
No, we just have less premium.
Right, okay.
Yeah, the premium has to be a backside interest, so it's a minimum principal interest. It's kind of a wash, but that's a good question.
Lisa, it sounds like you're comfortable with either scenario because each have advantages. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I could, I could do either, either scenario. I mean, I was on a scare board.
There really isn't a whole lot of difference between either one.
Well.
Back to your decisions.
It's, it's what is important to you is important. Is investment is important, is the tax impact important? You know, what, what is real, I know they're all important, but I mean, I've had districts that have said, we need every dollar invested, and just get it all done now. I've had districts that said, I don't wanna take any risks. I know this is the interest rate we have now, and it's a great rate, get it all done now. But I had Burlington who said, we want some flexibility for that second borrowing, and we don't know what our project costs are gonna come in at, and it was a small enough amount, point at, I'm going there tonight, we're doing the second borrowing, we're, we're putting a parameters resolution tonight for a second borrowing, and we may not issue it till fall, but they want the parameters resolution so we can lock in. So, you know, every district's needs are different, so I wanted to lay that out for you guys, and, but it would be good to have some direction.
So, in this scenario, you've got 109 as our levy. If, if it goes to 10 million, are we looking at maybe 480, 490?
If it goes to 10 million, yeah, so it would be the 409, is that what it is? Yeah, it would be high, it would be, it might be, it might be, because remember, I'm conservative on an insured too, so it would help me outweigh.
But it still gives us some flexibility.
It's still going to provide flexibility, I think, for the fall, for the 10 million.
Real quick, the timeline for the second, we would do a, we would do the ban and the parameters for the first note in May.
Yeah.
You start seeing warning signs that the, we then have to meet again and do a second step in the second note?
Yeah, we would do, and I, we could meet anytime and just do a parameters resolution, and that gives us that flexibility to lock in whenever, you know, whatever, you know, it fits into the plan and the parameters and, you know, market's good.
Okay, maybe I'll have any questions?
So, I think what it's important is we're gonna.
We're gonna take a straw boat.
Okay.
That way you'll, you'll know exactly, and I like the 10 million only because that's, then has the option of it staying local possibly. What you're asking me, guys, wants to do the other one. You don't want to go, it's not a general, straw boat, it's not a, I support the 10, I support the 10.
Okay. I was leaning the other way, just to lock it in, be done with it. I don't trust the volatility of the market. I don't feel comfortable with the risk. I like the additional earnings right away, so I'm leaning towards the first scenario, but I, I think we're, I think there's advantages of both, I get that point, I think, I don't think there's really any losers here, unless we, unless we really.
First one on the second borrow. Our local banks really wouldn't have an option for that thing, correct?
We could, we might be able to sell the, some of the short materials to them, yeah, yeah, we, yeah.
I don't, I don't gamble, so I'm kind of, but Doc, I mean, it's there, it's lower than what we asked for, that's, but, kinda like you said, there's no loser, but.
No, there's no.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just.
We got a majority for the 10 million.
Okay, what I would like to do is I would like to update this and get, but even like current market interest rates, because this is probably a week old, and I'm gonna put the 10 million in there, and then I will follow up and maybe share it with the board.
Yeah.
Okay, so that you have, you know what to expect on, and then May 13 is when you have two parameters resolutions, and I actually think I can be back at that board meeting, so we can revisit and just talk it through again, so.
Could you potentially do one also at the 10 million with the higher first year levy in case the logic comes in?
Yeah, so.
Just to see what numbers come out that way.
I mean, I could, but what you already want. I mean, I could, but what number do you want? I really want for the form, and I could put principal in that, yeah, and that's something we don't have to decide on May 13th. We can.
Maybe so. Maybe so. The first year is $1.78, I suspect.
Okay.
Just to see what the difference is.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I'll bring it up to the, yeah, I'll bring it up to $1.78.
Sorry about the year two sticker shack. They're expecting year one, and then what do you guys take?
It's like, whoa.
Yeah, year two, yeah, where it goes up down rate, just go up a little bit on year two. We could massage that a little bit, and two-face hearing will help that, right? Okay, so again, you're going to see.
We stop at the goal.
Yeah, so that second, I am going to, I think for that second borrowing too, I'm going to be more realistic with the interest rate. I'm not going to put as big of a cushion on there, just because from a structuring standpoint, if we get to sell the notes and it's 275, it messes up the right-hand column where you have, so I, that's just, I'll figure that out. Okay, so I'm going to run two scenarios. This is going to be the $10 million and the balance, and it's going to be, whatever the impact comes up to be based on this structure. And then the second structure will be bring it up to the $1.78. And we don't have to decide on that until we're closer, yeah.
One other thing I wanted to ask you about was the bond rate. I'm surprised that the rating would be at low, considering this had a previous referendum passage payment. I would think that would pose a hard either standard for Moody's on what you gave. That was somewhat low, I thought. I mean, based on what are you giving us, you know, 8?
Three?
Three, I just thought.
Well, it's based on this, which is the Moody's scorecard, so we put all your data. You have another couple hours, I can go through this with.
Well, I went through this a little bit with the New York guys when they were at the hospital, and the hospital was going through the bankruptcy. And I'd like to, could I look at that?
Absolutely.
Because I was surprised.
The bottom right-hand corner is what it's.
Yeah, but you came up with an 83, okay. I guess that was a little bit low.
There's only three, I think, I should know this. I think there are three AAA districts in the state of Wisconsin.
I can believe that, but.
Double A plus, there's, there's maybe 12. So the two top tiers, and one of them is DeForest, and they have 35% on the balance.
On the Wanakee.
Uh, they're probably double A, they're a notch above you.
Yeah.
So you guys are a notch below Wanakee with the double A three. And I'm not saying that you're no.3s. This is what their scorecard, but then they have these notching factors that can move you, so a lot of times I don't even trust the three.
Yeah, well, sometimes they look at your process and give you all reading.
So what's shaded in blue is where you guys are.
Okay.
And then the numbers, you can keep that.
Oh, thanks.
So I had a couple more slides.
Do you want them?
Well, the, well, the other two slides, well, the very last slide is just a tentative timeline. I would, I can, I'll update this as we go, and this is more for Mitch and Marcia anyway. But I, as a board, sometimes it's good to know, like, when you're needed, and it's going to be on the 13th, when we adopt the two resolutions for the timeline. But the rest of this is, is just, you know, work for Baird and Admin, but I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of an idea of where, you know, what's kind of happening next. And so for you guys, yeah, it would be the May 13th. We did have a lot, a discussion, Mitch and Marcia and I, regarding the role and how we sell the bonds, and this is another own conversation, but we did kind of dive deep into it and felt that we were, it was better that Baird was the underwriter. And one of the biggest reasons is that local bank participation. If you, if Baird's role as a municipal advisor, we would bid out the bonds to all the underwriters across the country. And a lot of times with the, with that type of process, all the time, I should say, you're not going to get the local bank involvement. You also can't do the parameters resolution. You would have to pick a board meeting date if we did a competitive sale. So we talked about it and felt that the parameters resolution option, along with the ability to be very flexible with the structure on the municipal advisor role. So we kind of went, we went through this discussion, but I wanted to make sure that you guys understood that. What else?
Yes?
Anything else?
I don't think so. All right. Well, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Nice and blue.
Yeah, so your tax base per capita came out in this category, which equals, that's the number of people who have to tax base per capita, which gave you that many points.
Sure.
Any questions? On the other side, for journalists, we have a double A and 1.9 for that.
So, okay. Based on everything I've received, using the CPI and applying it to the salary schedule, this would be the salary schedule for next school year, the 1920's school year. And that has been factored into our budget comparison, so as we look forward, we have, where we are budget-wise, trying to get us to a balanced budget. These numbers were, were rolled into salary and benefits. The insurance came back at 5%.
Versus a 7.9?
Versus 7.9, yes. We had GHC come on and meet with the staff, any staff members that wanted to show up, and they were right around 7, 6.9, 7%. And I had talked to Liz and said, you know, would you be willing to go back to Dean and just remind Dean that, look, we haven't had an increase in the last two years due to the healthy nature of the staff. Part of the reason that the interest or the percentage increase was coming down is because of the staff participating in a wellness program through Dean and their commitment to trying to maintain, anybody that takes insurance takes it through Dean, they brought it down. I was hoping for at least a percentage increase, but when they came down to 5%, that was phenomenal.
What was GHC's offer?
6.9. And, and GHC would take a minimum of at least two staff persons. If two staff people wanted to join GHC, they'd, they'd do it. Then you lose out any kind of negotiations with Dean at that point in time. And the, and then one of the issues, you know, the staff that were there, talking about GHC while allowing UW-Madison, Upland Hills is part of that, but the Dean clinic now becomes out of network in town, and it pretty much ends at Iowa County.
Yeah, eliminates almost all your local providers with GHC.
Right. And, and I had no staff members come in and, you know, pounding their fists, saying, this is what we want. So coming back with Dean and their return at, at 5%, you know, other districts are still paying 9, 10, 11% from one year to the next. You know, you figure 5% over, over that three years, you know, you're really looking at, you know, 1 and 3/4% when you factor two years of no increase. So all of those things are rolled in into where we sit right now financially. So I would recommend, I, this is something we can afford, I would recommend that we use the CPI. We'd need the blessings of the, the school board to move forward, so then we can get contracts out with dollar amounts.
So CPI again, mentions 2.44%.
4.4. Yeah, all right. It's right on the very top of that.
Oh, I got you.
Okay.
So what you're proposing is going to cause a minor point, how much more 1920 than it did in 1819?
I don't know that I can pull that specific, uh, well, sorry, I can. It would be about 230,000 different. So if you look at the salaries, most support staff have, if they're on the salary schedule and have steps available, get a 50 cent an hour per raise. Anybody that's topped out gets the CPI. So this is, all these salaries are everybody, including the new hires at this, on this salary schedule, and any of the reductions using some of the flow-through monies.
Somebody care to make a motion?
No, that would accept the salary lanes for the 2019, 2020 at 2.44%.
Second.
Move that.
Dr. Dow. Did you have a question? Do these comparisons include the $350,000 recurring referendum in the budget revenues? In what category? That's under property taxes? Okay, thank you. So right now, we're looking at $40,000 deficit.
If.
If everything holds?
Well, if everything holds, it would actually be $140,000 if we put $100,000 back into Roger's capital maintenance budget. And I still think we can get, we can get that. This has no money, as Lisa said, I have no idea what the state legislature is going to be doing. So this has nothing coming from the state legislature. If we get $200 per pupil, as one of the numbers thrown out there, the $140,000 is, is gone. The $40,000, as it sits now, that was on budget request from all staff members without them going back through and saying, look, this is, you're just coming in too high, we need to make cuts. So that, that will be reduced once we go through that next phase in our budgeting process here.
And this, this doesn't have any advanced purchases in it?
This does not have any advanced purchases in it, so.
We're kind of near towards a surplus.
Right. Yeah, there were, there was money in like our technology budget, we talked about needing to purchase two servers. We were going to take one out of this year's budget and one out of next, in the technology budget. Excuse me. That money is available. I told Dependable Solutions to give me a quote, and, and we have already purchased, so already next year, there's about a $15,000 reduction in our technology budget, because we don't need to purchase that second server out of the 1920. So some of those things will come down.
Did your salary, salaries like my item here, Mitch, reflect a principal position for next year?
It does at the high school level. At a, at a lower dollar amount right now, there would be some, some potential of that. The number that's factored in here might be a little bit different, but there is some money set aside right now for that.
Okay. And the other employees, do you know, is there an increase or a reduction in overall employees, the number? Are you just carrying this number forward with the employees?
This is, this, this number is based on the employees that we know are recommendations tonight, who we're hiring, the recommendations tonight, who would be laid out. Those numbers are all figured into these salaries right now.
Do you, do you know if that number's higher or lower from this number?
It would be lower in that, well, I take that back, it should be, it should be identical. It should be identical.
The same?
The same.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, we're having a net reduction in special ed staff.
In, in the salaries paid out, because some of that money will be spent through flow-through money. Some of the salaries will be covered.
Yeah.
Through some of the flow-through money, which will give us a reduction in the Fund 10 salaries.
Okay. And before we, before we vote, we need to, we need to find out what percent increase this is costing the district overall. Now, do we, do we include the, the 5% increase in health insurance in that?
That's in the benefits. That's factored in the benefits.
So we add them two up, and that'll give us our true actual cost of salary and benefit Someone else wants to do it?
So when people ask us, we know.
It's basically like 340, $340,000.
$340,000.
Salaries benefits increase. Based on this sheet. But someone can double check that if they want.
That principal's position, was that factored into salaries last year? I mean, that'd be like $100,000 fine out of mayor.
It, it was not, my salary was actually divided in half. Half of my salary was paid out of the superintendent's salary line item, and half of it was paid out of the high school principal's line item. But, but no, you did not, that, you know, you took a lot, that dollar amount, that was, that was part of the cost savings. When we had to cut $300,000, that was part of that cost savings.
And are you, are you funding the staff schedule fully?
Yes.
Okay. And we started that a year ago?
Uh, no. Kyle's not here anymore. I can't remember. It was probably three, four years ago.
This schedule?
Yes.
It was at least four years ago. The support staff was new last year? So 340 with the addition of a principal?
And just to be clear, Mitch, I mean, the, dividing your salary in half and putting that half towards a line item high school principal, that's probably not accurate for a separate high school principal's salary.
Correct.
That would be kind of undershooting that part a bit.
Correct.
Right? So did we just carry that over to this year's budget? Or did we increase that a little bit?
You took, all of my salary next year is put into the superintendent's line item, and we laid in a dollar amount for a high school principal. It's, it's, I will say, it's probably on the low side, depending on experience factor.
Okay. But it's within market value of a typical salary, just on the low end.
It'd probably be very low end of market value.
Okay.
It was, you know, it was, it was in the $60,000 number right now is laid into that salaries.
Okay.
That would be very low.
So to Larry's point, we might be expecting to pay a little more than that when we hire our high school principal. So just mentally add that to the, to the budget for now.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So does it tish under 6% increase overall?
I got 4%.
With, you're talking salaries and benefits?
Yeah, it's certainly under 5.
Yeah, it's 4. something. I would do it again here, just to make sure.
What'd you come up with, Doc?
Uh, it was 4%.
4%?
Yeah.
All right.
It's higher than the CPI.
Is that standard for schools, where it says? Just asking. A lot of school districts have settled on the salaries at, at the CPI.
2.44%.
And, and a lot of other school districts, their insurance premium increase is, is much higher than 5%.
We've been fortunate, up until this year, 0%.
Correct, which is unheard of.
Right.
When I went someplace and said, well, you know, we're looking at our consortium, our consortium is like, like 9 and 3/4 of what was yours, and they said minus 0 last year. And then we, we had a very healthy staff. Now, this, this past year.
Must have been too high to begin with.
It could be too. But the, there, there were some costly health needs from staffing over this last year, and that's why it came in. They originally were looking at 9.4%. The wellness brought it down to 7.9, and then just some competition brought it down to 5%.
Okay. Do you foresee reductions in operating, the operating budget?
Yes.
Minus salaries and benefits?
Yes. In order to, in order to present a balanced budget in October, yes, that, that number will get to 0. That 40, negative 40 right now, that's. That's the ultimate goal is to bring back the balanced budget that you asked for year after year. And that's the ultimate goal, we'll make it in, you know, some requesting cuts. Again, what, what the government, government does in Madison as far as per pupil funding.
There's one number that kind of jumps out to me that I don't quite understand. The category other in 2018, 19, it was 298, 298,000. For the next year, it's a million, 172,000, which is a big jump. I'm just trying to figure out.
It's a debt payment? Marsha just said it's a debt payment.
Oh, that's what did that. Okay. I thought, wow.
It's that new car you want to die? It's gonna be a nice one.
Sure.
So just going down through here, yeah, Jesse, purchase services, $18,000. Open enrollment, the same non-capital objects. You got a pretty good reduction there, explain what, what's going to be cut?
This is based on like teacher requests, items that they're, they're looking for. You know, so do I need, what kind of equipment do I need? And, and the reductions that were made in some of those requests coming in.
So 48,000 was it?
Yeah.
And we asked them last year to, to cut their budgets. Now, is this on top of that?
There's, I guess there's a couple of staff members, they don't read very well. When I sent out the email saying, when you put your budget requests in, please understand we've cut $300,000. So please keep your request to the dollar amount you put in last year. Well, that didn't quite happen. So that's why I will be going back and saying, look, you know, these are not, these are not numbers that you put in a year ago. You know, you, you've increased some of your requests drastically and that's where I would start with some, some of the staff members. And we would look to make cuts. So right, right away, I, I know that I can get the $40,000 down to zero just by starting with staff members and, and doing those kinds of things. Not, not digging in to individual budget request forms that the teachers submitted, but I would imagine they're, I, I don't want to pick on the elementary, but I think there's probably some requests for some new classroom furniture, flexible seating and those kinds of things. And that's also built into the building project. So I would just say we need to push those things off until the building project is completed. So I, I'm sure we would be able to capture some of that money back just in that alone.
How can you handle special requests or something that somebody comes in and says, this is really revolutionary for children's education? I know it's never been in the budget before and, you know, I've been to this seminar. I mean, how's that handled?
Typically, that would go like to the building principals first before we'd come to the district office. I personally am not a chase after the newest, shiniest object. I would want to get opportunity to really investigate and dig into it and find out, okay. I, I don't necessarily, I mean, coming in number one is great sometimes, but I don't want to be the first one to spend the money on it all. So two years later, it's half the cost, or two years later, this was a big waste of money. I, I would rather be third, fourth, fifth in line to see, okay, somebody has tried it, who else is using it? Let us, let's get, if it's close enough, let's get to that school district and find out how are they using it? How's it been beneficial? Does it fit what we have? You know, does it require more staff to be able to implement something like this? So that, that's the approach I would certainly use.
I like that.
On the state aid, Mitch, I see you carried that number straight across. And that's based on not having anything from Madison, Madison. But what did we get last year? Did we get $200 per pupil?
Oh, I'd have to look back at the numbers, I'm not...
I mean, you could all foresee us losing that. I mean, it's just a different governor, of course.
It, it is, and the thing, it was a kind of a one-time deal. You know, it was...
Originally it was only 100, I think.
Right. And then, then I think it came back and it was like, you can't, you can't depend on this to be there next year. It was just one-time offer of $200 per pupil, that's it.
And does that number include that $200 per pupil?
This, this, whatever we got last year is, is what's in here. The, the talk out of Madison was to increase it by another 200. There was also talk in Madison about increasing state aid for special education. So if you look down where it says the Fund X, the Fund 27, that number could change if the legislature decides to go that route and, and put more money from the state. That leaves more money in Fund X that can help offset some other things.
Open enrollment, do we have that information yet? Are people are open enrollment for next year?
Yes.
And does it look as robust next year as it did this year?
I don't have that information, Lane would have that, but...
It's one of the things we'll be bringing to the main...
It looks as robust, Angie is shaking her head over there.
Just hearing comments about them coming in, there's a very large group of 4K students that are applying for open enrollment and others across the district, so I believe it's looking very favorable, yes.
Got to remember the 4K kids, although they're great to have in here and hopefully we keep them. It's not a one-to-one. Yeah. Oh, yeah, and then we have some special ed students that come in and that would require transfer of services and that would be an additional revenue that we would be...
As due to the option school, correct? Or not necessarily?
Not necessarily.
Transfer of services available for, if a student moves into our district this year and we incur costs for them, then we can apply to have those costs carried over to us permanently from their previous districts. It also applies for ELL students, if we were to ever have a ELL population move in and we incurred costs in order to educate them and those services follow them.
Okay.
And it just has to be that the student is going to be here next year as well.
Whether or not they're in options or not?
Nope, doesn't matter which, whether special education or English language learners.
Okay.
They would need to be our student?
Yes.
An option, an option student could be...
Those are contract kids from outside?
They could, it could be, you know, it has to be a minimum point student that ended up going to options. And the previous couple of years, there was money for transfer services. And once that's in your budget, it stays in your budget. We did not have any for this current school year, there was no transfer of services, so we didn't get any of that money. And then obviously, open enrollment, you get two-thirds of the state funding and a third of that, if you think about it, because it's a three-year rolling average. But there would be an increase in our state aid for that.
I, I have a problem, I always have had a problem with setting the salaries and benefits portion of this right up front, then everything else has got to fall in behind this, as it did last year. And then it was cut after cut after cut after cut after cut. Because we gave out this generous salary increase. I think this budget should work in tandem with, with our teachers and benefits and support staff. And I, I will not support the salary increase until we find out more details and can iron out this budget personally. And I, I can't understand either why the, why our state leaders expect us to go through all this in, in not knowing what we're getting next year. That is, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, I know it's not what you can do.
And, you know, the, the governor was supposed to present his budget and they were, should be working on it now. Well, and there was the, here's my, here's my budget and we don't like it, we're going to present our own budget. So they're in essence butting heads in Madison. And, you know, when they pay out their state aid, they don't pay it out in even sums throughout the year, you know. So that's why we have the, the short-term borrowing of the 1.5 million. Because when we have to pay bills and we have to pay salaries and we have to pay all those other things and we don't have that money, we borrow it and the state gives us, the largest check we get from the state comes in that August time period when it comes to state aid. And it's like, well, you know, we didn't need it then, we needed it earlier. But that's how they work.
To Larry's point about the timing of budgetary decisions, I mean, are we obligated to make a decision on salaries and benefits at a certain point in the calendar year? Either based on standard practice or board policy or anything like that? You know, but have we promised the teachers that we would let them know by a certain time in the year of what they're going to expect for the following years in case they want to change schools or, or something like that?
There is a lot of that that goes into place. You need to renew your insurance provider and that comes at this time of year. So then you know, okay, if, if we're going to stay with Dean and we're going to stay in this capacity, here's the increase that's going to be, so you, so you, I mean, that's, that's a bill that we have to take the money out of. When, when you issue a contract for a staff person, you don't typically just say, you're going to have a teaching contract here next year? You know, they, they can't get less next year than what they got this year. So you tend to put that dollar amount based on, you know, what, what is, what is the CPI? I've had several conversations with staff members saying CPI, just CPI, isn't necessarily a pay raise. It's a stay even with the cost of living, because that's what the Consumer Price Index is, a cost of living increase. So you're, they're just maintaining their current level, purchase power, so to speak. So, you know, while it does cost the taxpayers additional monies, it is, it is something that has been put into play, you know. I think every school district's in the same mode and same positions. Okay, what, what pay raises are, you know, what's going to be used?
This has been one of the higher CPIs? Does anybody know?
Probably in the last four years. Because then one year was .12, then it was like 1.2. I think last year might have been, what did we talk about last time? 2.1?
2.1.
So this is a little bit higher than it was a year ago, yes.
I'm not going to argue with you on that, Mitch. I'm not going to agree with you either, because at, at a half percent, I, I would say yes. At a 2.44? Yeah. Maybe I don't understand the CPI good enough, I guess. And then, I'm not the one telling, you know, but...
It's kind of related nationally, is that correct or is it the state of CPI?
Right. The option budget is in Washington, it's a CPI. And it's based, you know, they give you all the items, they base it on purchasing and then they come up with a number.
There are like 15 sub CPIs you could use. There's a Midwest CPI.
Yeah.
There's a Midwest CPI minus increase in medical, which would be helpful because we provide the health insurance. I think pretty much every district just uses the national CPI.
Which is center only, 1.75.
Well, I agree, Mitch, it's treading water when you're doing the CPI. It's, you know, you're just keeping your same purchasing power.
You know, if you, if you think 2.44% is a lot, first of all, we have highly educated people that are teachers. Most of the teachers, a lot of the teachers have masters. We only reimburse them $100, $150 per credit if it's approved. A credit can be as much as $1,000. So if they want to go back and get their master's degree, they have to pay to get their master's degree minus $150 per credit, which is not a lot of money. So I think that this is a very reasonable pay scale, especially if we want to attract and keep qualified teachers here. And me being a teacher myself, I know what it's like if you want to get your master's degree or get another certification, you know. And then you come out of school with $40,000 with student loans and you're going to start out at $38,000 a year. You know, it's not way out there. So I think we owe it to our staff to approve this.
I just want to make a separate comment about health insurance. You remember we switched health insurance agents last year to Liz Danberg, who opened a shop here in town? And I think our other agent was in Madison and I just want to say I've worked with her a couple of times in conjunction with the Wellness Committee. She has my advice on like the, the health assessment, Wellness Committee curriculum and stuff like that. And, and it's my understanding that the prior broker really was not super involved in keeping the staff well, meaning keeping them from being sick and using claims, which would increase the premiums and therefore increase cost of the taxpayer year to year. So she's been real active with the Wellness Committee and she's got a good plan, using the resources that Dean Health Plan provides as far as education, and I know they're already doing some competitions, you guys probably sent some emails to staff and stuff. But I thought it was, and I don't think she's doing that for any additional fee that I'm aware of. It's just as far as her, her obligation to do the best for the district. So that was nice to see that the broker we've selected is actually being proactive with trying to keep its staff healthy. And I think if we can get all the staff to buy into that, you know, establishing that kind of wellness culture, I think we will be able to keep health insurance costs down long-term.
And we can't maintain a 0% increase forever?
This, this 5% came with a, a cap at 5.5% next year? If we have a healthy year and a low claims year, it may be less than that. But to know that you're not, we would not be looking at anything more than 5.5% the following year? Again, where some districts are looking at 9, 10, 11%. I'm very happy with that. There are some staff members here that took part in the, in the wellness check, you know, so you could, prediabetes, high blood pressure, all those kinds of things. And, I mean, there was some incentive for the staff, but I think knowing that it wasn't, you know, my numbers aren't going to be shared with everybody, I think there was a lot of comfort with that and I think those numbers may grow. And, and, you know, something like that may continue to help us down the road as far as, you know, working with Liz, working with the Wellness Committee here at school and, and the Dean providers. So I think there are good things there that are happening.
Any other comments?
Yeah. For me, it is if, if you can confidently say that you can have this budget, you know, balanced if we give them the pay increase. Because, I mean, I, I agree with Larry, we can't give out money that we don't have.
Correct.
That is the biggest thing that I, you know, have a problem with. But within, without cutting things that obviously we need, you know, if it's things we want, hey, good, cut them. Let's pay the teachers because they are the most important part. So that, that's just, that's my two cents on it. If you feel 100% confident that this can be balanced with everything that's going to happen, then, then I support it.
My goal, my ultimate goal would be to give you a balanced budget without knowing what Madison is going to provide. That, that would be my ultimate goal, to be able to confidently say to you, we have a balanced budget. Now, if Madison provides additional funding and hopefully they do it before the end of October when we have to, you know, set the levy, then, then that's bonus and there's things that we might be able to layer back in. But that's your goal. That's my goal and having the least amount of impact on the learning that happens in the classroom is the next goal. You know, if there's going to be budget cuts, I'm going to try to make it somewhere where it does not impact what happens with students in the classroom.
Okay. Anybody else? Can you give my follow-up question, Chris?
Dull?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stethus?
No.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Fasting?
Yes.
Okay. So we have conducted the interviews for middle school special education teacher and elementary special education teacher. And have two candidates we would recommend for approval at the elementary school.
Before we go any further.
Go.
Item five, one and two, I think we should table to a closed session for Monday. Because I think that we're talking about staff and individuals and I think we need to have that in a closed session in case there's anybody that has any concerns or comments. I just believe it should be in a closed session, closed session, so I'm moving that we do that.
I will say. Do you have concerns or have you heard something to respond to?
I don't want to talk about that now. I'm just saying, I think there, we need to go on. Anytime we talk about personnel, I think we need to be in a closed session. And we didn't do that. Because I don't think when you talk about personnel or hiring or getting rid of people, it should be in an open session.
it should be in an open session.
Don't have a problem with that.
So, Josh, in a second, do you have any other comments or remarks?
You said items one and two?
Yes. Item five, one and two.
Six.
Okay, so Dahl?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stethis?
Yes.
Bush?
No.
Chambers?
Yes.
Fasting?
Yes.
Okay.
Move that with your turn.
Thank you. If they want a second down?
I'll say that.